It is now six thirty P M. And I would ask that you rise and join me in the invocation to be given by Pastor Susan Bennett with Stockbridge Presbyterian Church. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Bennett?
Please pray with me. Our most gracious and loving God, your promise is that you are with us always and we are so grateful. Most especially at this moment, we pray that your presence would fill this room, would fill the heart of every commissioner, every officer, every person who is here. Lord, there are decisions to be made, there are plans to be implemented, finalized. All of this means that lives will be touched, lives will be changed, communities will be affected. So we pray most sincerely, Lord, for your wisdom and your guidance in the governance of this county with all of its individuals and families and communities. We know, Lord, that you are completely good, that you ask us to put our trust in you, and this we do. We thank you for the privilege of serving you, and we pray above all things that your will would be done. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Bennett. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. I have a couple of announcements. The following planning and zoning items were advertised for this meeting but have been postponed at the request of the applicants. And these cases will be heard on April eighteenth, twenty seventeen, and the properties will be reposted. Public hearing items, M C thirteen oh one, Builders Professional Group of Jonesboro has been postponed. Public hearing, C O M P, A M fifteen oh four, the Racco Greenwood Business Park L L C. Also, the public hearing, R Z fifteen twelve, Racco Greenwood Business Park regarding a rezoning. And then, of course, the public hearing of A P seventeen oh one, Jodeco Road, United Methodist Church, regarding the appeal of a variance request. I now call for a motion to amend the agenda by removing, removing the items just mentioned.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Barnes.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Holmes. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? We now will move to the proclamation for Women's History Month, and we'll introduce Melissa Robinson to come forward.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first one is a proclamation and recognition of Women's History Month, and the second one is a recognition of our Henry County Police Department heat unit. And so what we'll do is I'll read both recognitions, and then after that time, we can come and get pictures of the front. A proclamation and recognition of Women's History Month. Whereas throughout history, extraordinary women have fought tirelessly to broaden our democracy's reach and help perfect our union. And whereas, as today's women and girls reach for new heights, they stand on the shoulders of all that have come before them and carry forward their legacy of proud achievements. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of this great country by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas, women have played a unique role throughout history of this nation by providing the majority of its volunteer labor force, and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women from all walks of life served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only working towards their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement and other crusades. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that March is designated as Women's History Month, and they recognize the countless outstanding contributions women have made to our county, our country, and the world. This twenty-first day of March two thousand seventeen, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun. The second recognition this evening, and I'm joined by Deputy Chief Mark Amerman, is a certificate of achievement. And this certificate is awarded to the Henry County Police Department's heat unit in recognition of the Henry County Police Department's heat unit, which is the Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic, for their outstanding service to the community and earning the prestigious designation of being named the Matton Agency of the Year by the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. And I know Chief Amerman has a few words to say.
First off, I want to say Chief Nicholas sends his apologies. He's actually teaching at the Citizen Police Academy tonight, and that's why he's not here with us tonight. But I'd like to thank the board for taking the time to recognize the department for their efforts in traffic enforcement and their attempts to make the county and all its visitors safe that are coming here day in, day in and day out. But the tip of the spear that does that is our heat unit. Today, I'd like to introduce the commander that's over special operations is Captain Simmons. The commander over the heat unit itself is Sergeant Comby. Then part of the heat unit is Officer Horn, Officer Jones, and Officer Palmer. They do an outstanding job in their efforts to help through enforcement and through educational programs. They do a great job. Departmentally, last year, the agency made over five hundred D U I R S, wrote over thirty thousand tickets, and wrote over eighteen thousand warnings. So we're doing a good job to try to make it safe for everybody here.
Thank you. Board regarding Women's History Month, and also in recognition of the Henry County Police Department heat unit.
I want to thank you guys, the heat unit. Got to ride out with the other Palmer. Got several Palmers, but hadn't got to ride with any of you guys. But public didn't realize you guys are frontline, getting DUIs off the road. And we've seen some pretty serious accidents with DUIs. So I really appreciate what you guys do. I know it's not glamorous work at all dealing with drunks, but we really appreciate what you do. So thank you so much.
And also thank you to the heat department, the police department. We really appreciate your service to this county. And for Women's History Month, when we take the picture, if Chief Willis would come up and make sure you take a picture with us, please.
Remember, Chair.
We really appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Thank you guys so much for your service.
And I'd like to add that we do not take it for granted what you do. So we thank you for your service. We also thank your families for the service that you give back to the public as well. And also regarding Women's History Month, just want to give a special commendation to all of the women that have been part of history, that have made a significant impact to our society and even to our community. So congratulations to Women's History Month as well. Very good. Ready for the pictures? We'll now move into our consent agenda, and the following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda, I'll just again, just read through what we have. We have two items from S P L O S, the resolution approving the reimbursement agreement with Snapping Shells M C for Anvil Block Road in District Five. We also have a approval to, for a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation of Acquisition of Right-of-Way for Elliott Road Bridge in District Three. We have an item from the Henry County Development Authority, a letter requesting support from the Board of Commissioners for a Regional Economic Business Assistance Grant from D C A for the Development Authority. And then for senior services, we have a resolution request for a submittal of contract proposal for the Community Services Block Grant Funding to D H S for F Y twenty eighteen. From Parks and Recreation, we have a resolution authorizing the lease of a more equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department. And then from Purchasing, we have a resolution identifying and authorizing the disposal of surplus items and equipment. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, a call for a motion to accept the consent agenda. Got a motion by Commissioner Holmes, second by Commissioner Prince. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? This ends the consent agenda. We'll now ask Mr. Tim Cooley to come forward regarding our Parks and Recreation Resolution to Order bid for the purchase of an infield mix for the Henry County Parks and Recreation Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We sent out, the purchasing department sent out a bid packet. It was bid number seventeen dash thirty-two to purchase infield mix for our ball fields. We had one vendor that submitted back. The funds are available in the Recreation Department account for this commodity. Rocket Sand and Gravel was submitted, the lowest bid for the purchase of infield mix, and are recommended by departmental personnel. And the purchasing directors shall be able to authorize and execute any renewal agreements as required.
Are there any questions for Mr. Cooley?
I've got one question.
Tim, is this mix, is it very similar to what we used to call the brick dust?
Yes, it's just a lot cheaper. It's a, it's a, it's a screened red clay and sand mix.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, we now call for a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Barnes. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Cooley. We'll now ask Mr. Stroud to come up to discuss a stormwater resolution regarding a bid for a storm street sweeper.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Henry County Stormwater is required to work toward preventing pollution within our M S four charter. To that end, keeping the storm system within our streets and right-of-way clean is a necessary task. Cleaning the debris from the streets and storm systems efficiently and safely requires the use of a street sweeper. Cleaning the streets is, not only helps prevent pollution and debris from washing into the drainage networks, but it also serves to extend the life of the storm system by preventing, excuse me, preventing overloading resulting from blockages, and can keep the traveling public safe. So understanding the need and seeing the appropriate application, Stormwater is asking to bring this equipment into its fleet to provide the services to Henry County. Atlantic Machinery of Silver Springs, Maryland has available one Schwartz A four storm street sweeper listed on N J P A contract. That number is zero two two zero one four A M I for a total of one hundred and forty-nine thousand eighty dollars. And again, this money is coming from the Stormwater Fund balance, not general fund. I want to make that clear. And we ask that we approve the budget amendment for this purchase.
Be happy to answer any questions. Any questions?
Sweeper.
Our intent now, Commissioner Holmes, is we'd like to spend one week in each district and rotate through each district one week at a time. So it'll be in constant operation.
Got it.
Commissioner Barnes?
Just comment. I think this is going to be a great access to us. I mean, this is going to really protect our streams and help us from our water pollution. I think this is a great move. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Are you just looking at, speaking of the commercial corridors or?
We'll do residential curb and gutter sections as well as commercial corridors.
Subdivisions?
Yes, sir.
You can't do parts of twelve.
Absolutely.
Other questions? All right, we now call for a motion for approval.
So move.
We got a motion by Commissioner Barnes, second by Commissioner Clemmons. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Stroud. And we'll move on to the next item as well.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The next item is, we're asking to purchase one eleven-four S D combination jet vacuum sewer cleaner from Atlantic Machinery of Silver Springs, Maryland. This again is on N J P A contract number zero two two zero one four dash A M I, in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Also, please note, this does come out of Stormwater Fund balance, not general fund, fund balance. So we are requesting a budget amendment to cover this cost. Henry County, as Stormwater is again required to work towards preventing pollution in our M S four charter. To that end, keeping the storm system within our right-of-way clean is a necessary task. Cleaning debris from the storm system efficiently and safely requires the use of a vacuum truck. Cleaning the system not only helps prevent pollution and debris from washing into our drainage networks, but it can also serve to extend the life of the storm system by preventing overloading resulting from blockages, and can keep the traveling public safe by reducing ponding on roadways due to poor functioning drains. So to that end, we are asking that this piece of equipment be allowed to be brought on board. Again, this on N J P A contract zero two two zero one four dash A M I from Atlantic Machinery, Inc. of Silver Springs, Maryland, in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And again, it does require a budget amendment coming from Stormwater Fund balance. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this item.
Wade, I love the direction that you're going in in terms of keeping our streets and right-of-ways clean. However, it's that time of year where, you know, where the grass is going to start growing in the right-of-ways and the medians. What's the plan for keeping the medians and the, and the right-of-ways maintained this year?
If you don't mind holding that thought, Commissioner Holmes, we'll get to that in the next agenda item. Yes, sir, Commissioner Prince.
Go ahead.
Wade, would you take the citizens through this as a point of interest, what we do now, what we have to do now to clean out the drains?
Sure.
Because I think they need to know why we're spending this much money.
Right. We have a small pull behind pothole machine that also functions as our pipe cleaner. Basically, it's a pressure washer wand that somebody has to literally get down in the pipe and shoot in there. It's very nasty work, and really and truly, it's not necessarily safe work. They have to wear what's akin to like a medical suit with a mask over them. What this does, it removes the operator away from the system. The jets, the jet function is automatically feeds itself back out of the pipe, sucks the debris into the tank at the same time. So our biggest hope is, number one, we definitely want to tackle some of our impaired waterways for sediment, and this is a great way for us to do that. And it also, too, helps improve the functionality of our storm systems. A lot of erosion that occurs under driveway pipes and culverts is because those systems are blocked up, the water ponds up behind it has to flood over the top of the driveway or whatever's in the way, and it causes more sedimentation erosion downstream. This will be a great way for us to, again, be proactive and not reactive to this issue. Thank you, Wade. You're welcome.
Other questions? All right. Now call for a motion to approve this bid.
Move to approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Prince, second. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Clemmons. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we're now moving to D O T items.
We'll change hats for a minute.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, ma'am. This agenda item is the purchase of equipment for Henry County Department of Transportation as well as an associated budget amendment. The D O T receives several calls daily regarding the need to mow the grass in the right-of-way. In addition to need to mow more than four times a year, the D O T has tractors and mowers that are aged and frequently go out of service, further exasperating our citizens. Bid number seventeen dash forty-two was conducted through the purchasing department and posted on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and A C C G G L G A. Bid invitations were sent out via Team Georgia Marketplace, and two vendors responded. Mason Tractor and Equipment of McDonough, Georgia responded with the lowest bid for two Kubota M five dash one one H D C twelve tractors with weighted tires in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, two Terrain King K B twenty-one boom mowers in the amount of eighty-five thousand five hundred dollars, and one mini excavator in the amount of seventy-nine thousand dollars. Mason Tractor also qualified for the Henry First Initiative Local Vendor Program and has agreed to match the lowest bid for four Bush Hog thirty-eight ten single flex wing rotary mowers in the total amount of fifty-five thousand six hundred dollars, and one Kubota S V L dash nine five two S track loader in the amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Atlanta Kubota of Marietta provided the low bid for four Kubota M five dash one one H D C tractors in the total amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, totaling for that set five hundred and sixty-two thousand eight hundred and two dollars. An addendum was included in the bid process that allows the director to purchase in addition to the above, at the bid price, one additional Kubota S V L ninety-five, nine five two S track loader, including the match price awarded by the Henry First Initiative Local Vendor Program, and fifty-eight, at fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and one mini excavator totaling seventy-nine thousand dollars from Mason Tractor. This brings the overall purchase price to seven hundred thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. The funding requires a budget amendment approval from D O T personnel to capital equipment totaling seven hundred thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. I apologize, that's an extremely confusing bid, but let me explain to you why we're asking what we're asking for. As Commissioner Holmes has already alluded to, one of our biggest challenges that we have at D O T is right-of-way mowing. As we assessed our fleet, D O T currently has, and let me get my sheet out so I make sure I tell you the right amount, we have seventeen total tractors, sixteen of which can be used for mowing. We have five A booms, which are the, which are the mowers that have the, the rotary mower out on the side that trim the trees, and eleven Bush Hawks to cover one thousand two hundred and fifty paved miles and a hundred dirt road miles in Henry County. Our fleet has tractors that date back to nineteen eighty-six, nineteen ninety, and nineteen ninety-seven, to name some of our oldest tractors. Part of the biggest challenge that we have with this equipment is it constantly stays in the shop. And I want to commend Jody because Jody has basically turned into MacGyver and is able to put these tractors back on, back out on the streets with baleen wire and duct tape. With the four tractors that we have in our fleet, the model that they have, parts are no longer fabricated. So we currently have to come up with a way to make these tractors work. So what we're proposing to do is we're going to take two of these tractors out of our system. We're going to replace those with two of the A booms, which I suggested, and that was the one that had the Terrain King boom mowers. We're going to get, asking for two new A booms to replace those. I want to add four additional tractors to our fleet. I think, I think based off the level of service that I hear that our citizens ask for, and that this board would like to see our department provide to the citizens of Henry County, it's time to expand our fleet. By adding these four additional tractors, it's going to allow us to cover more miles, more efficiently, and more quickly. Now, you did notice in this bid, there were a couple of other items. We're asking for two mini excavators and two skid steers. Henry County Department of Transportation has one excavator for the entire county. Let me repeat that. Henry County D O T has one excavator for the entirety of Henry County. These mini excavators will be invaluable to our department in a lot of ways. Number one, they take up a much smaller footprint. Majority of the pipes that we replace inside our right-of-way and then under our driveways are twenty-four inches or less. That's what these, these tractors are perfect for. When you're working a road under traffic, a tractor this size can sit in one lane and have less of an impact on how we have to detour traffic around our worksite versus when we move our John Deere two thirty out there that takes up the entire shoulder and the travel lane all at the same time. Now, the two skid steers are invaluable pieces of equipment as well. Henry County D O T has one, let me repeat, one skid steer for the entirety of the whole department. These skid steers are great for doing finishing work on jobs. They're great for doing backfilling on a pipe project where you don't have to have the excavator doing both the work. You can have the excavator digging on one end as you backfill the other end with the skid steers. They also lend themselves to have multiple attachments that work well for what we do. You can put grapple hooks on the front of them to pick up construction debris. You can attach a Harley rake on the front of them that helps finish our shoulders in the projects that we work on inside residential areas back to a finished grade versus a rough grade. So tonight, I ask this board to strongly consider approving this budget amendment for the purchase of each one of these items that have been listed tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Commissioner Barnes?
Wade, I'm totally in support of this, and how you keep that old stuff running anyway is beyond me because I tell you, it gets to the point where it costs you more to, to work on those things than it is to personally. But safety is one of my big concerns, and I just want to kind of hear what you plan on, how, we're going to have these on the right-of-way. What kind of L E D lighting or safety lighting are you going to have on these mowers, if any?
Typically, the lighting that we do, Commissioner Barnes, is not part of the bid. When, when we get that in-house, it's a lot cheaper for us to add that type of lighting through our fleet department. So that's definitely something that we'll work with Jody on to add to this. Typically, when we're doing right-of-way mowing, we have a trailer vehicle behind it as well, keeping the public slowed down. Now, I know there are times where, based off numbers, that's difficult to do. So we'll make sure that we address that with some sort of L E D lighting or flashing lighting on the tops of these tractors through our fleet department.
Other questions? Commissioner Prince?
As you know, number one complaint I get right-of-ways, grass and litter.
Yes, sir.
Number one complaint by far. So I'm glad to see this moving forward. My question, as I understand it, District Five and District Four share a crew.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Is that correct?
It is.
And so we're, at some point, going to need to explore District Five and District Four having their own right-of-way crew. Is that correct?
I'm thankful you asked that question. That is part of our budget recommendation for D O T is to add a standalone crew so that we can have each district have its own crew.
Okay. Well, I'd like to point out to the acting assistant county manager right now that that's high on the priority list. Again, number one complaint I get since I've been in office, right-of-ways, grass, litter. So I know that Commissioner Holmes and I share a crew, but I think it's about that time. We've got too much corridors in our, in our area, so.
And I will say, Commissioner Prince, this is what, this is vision casting on my part, adding these tractors. That, that's what the intent is, is to go ahead and get the equipment so that when this board is kind enough to allow us to add that crew to our staff, we've got the equipment ready for them day one to step into and go.
Now, the second thing, what about personnel? Do we have the personnel right now? And what are we doing on litter? Because litter- that that's high on the priority list again. Number one complaint I get since I've been in office, right-of-ways, grass, litter. So, I know that Commissioner Holmes and I share a crew, but I think it's about that time. We've got too much corridors in our, in our area, so.
And I will say, Commissioner Prince, this is what, this is vision casting on my part adding these tractors. That, that's what the intent is, is to go ahead and get the equipment so that when this board is kind enough to allow us to add that crew to our staff, we've got the equipment ready for them day one to step into and go.
Now, the second thing, what about personnel? Do we have the personnel right now, and what are we doing on litter? Because it, litter's first, you've got to pick up the litter before you cut the grass, so.
Correct. Great question. One of the things that we've done since I get to wear two hats at DOT and Stormwater is we repurpose one of our inmate crews to nothing but litter pickup. Those guys are following our commercial corridors right now. They've been doing that for approximately three weeks, and they have had some other jobs they had to help finish that they were appropriated to. They flipped it in three weeks with some breaks in between. We anticipate that they'll be able to start flipping that, those corridors now that they've made the initial sweep through once every, at worst, two weeks.
How many inmate crews do we have?
Henry County Stormwater has two. Currently, I know that the building maintenance has a prison crew, and obviously, community service is another partner with us in picking up on the right-of-way. So, community service, one of their main functions is to help go out and clean up our right-of-ways. We're supplementing their efforts as they get called into complaint areas to where we've identified a constant route for the Stormwater crew to go out and maintain.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'd like to add as well that in addition to the community service groups, there's been communities that have adopted highways recently. I know there was a date a couple of weeks ago where we had residents and community participants that got out and helped pick up litter, and we need to again applaud them for doing that as well. There's going to be another adopter highway date coming up, so please look out on the website for that as well, so. And I see now our assistant county manager has a question, a statement.
Commissioner Prince, just to go Mr. Strauss's comments. Our community service department, which falls under our code enforcement department, over the last thirty to forty-five days has gone in and created zones based on the number of community service crews that we have. So, right now, we have four crews that are split up not by districts but by zones, and what they're doing is they're going through those specific corridors, I think it's bi-weekly, looking at that litter pickup. So, while we have DOT working on it with their crew, we also have our community service crew, crews working daily.
Barb, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Barham.
Wade, I just, I just want to say I really appreciate that our local vendor less than a mile down the road got a lot of this work here, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, we're really excited. It does make our life easier when fleet has to order parts, the parts readily available. If there's something our fleet management department can't fix, we have a shop right down the road that we can take our equipment to, so.
All right, any other comments, questions? We're now called for a motion authorizing the purchase of this equipment as stated.
Move to approve.
We got a motion by Commissioner Prince.
Second.
We've got a second by Commissioner Clemmons. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Strouts.
Thank you, and on behalf of our employees, we appreciate your investment in our department.
All right, thank you. We will now move to item eleven on our community development, and we'll ask Ms. Shannon Samuel to join in to give us a public comment on the proposed amendments to the CDVG.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. The Henry County Community Development Department is seeking to amend an activity identified in the fiscal year 2016 Annual Action Plan. As required by the Citizens' Participation Plan, staff did publish a public notice, and it was displayed in numerous public facilities around the county. Concurrently, a public review and comment period has been held from Monday, February second through Monday, March, excuse me, Monday, February twentieth through Monday, March twentieth. No public comments were received. Following much interaction and engagement with property owners, it has been found that the Ty Street community has multiple homes that are in need of substantial renovations and rehab improvements exceeding the previously described and approved maximum of twenty-five thousand per home. This was not known at the time that the award was made and when the Annual Action Plan was approved. The, if I can add to that, the specific needs or conditions of the homes were not known. The amount does include cost of materials and labor. This proposed amendment is to eliminate the twenty-five thousand maximum per home assistance available for the owner occupied housing rehabilitation assistance program in the Ty Street community. This request does not alter nor does it increase the total award for the rehab program. The goal for the activity remains to assist twenty households. Although multiple of the households have been identified who are in need of substantial rehab, there do remain those households in need of minor housing rehab to include weatherization, modifications to accommodate residents with disabilities, and energy efficiency improvements. This is a public hearing, and I am available to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions before we move into the public hearing? Well, this is a public hearing to receive public comment on the proposed amendments to the CDVG 2016 Annual Action Plan. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to the request will have a total of ten minutes to present their opposition, and those in favor will likewise have ten minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now. Last call, anyone in opposition, please come now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Last call for those in favor, please come now. All right, the public hearing has now concluded. Now call for a motion.
Comment.
Okay, we've got a question, I'm sorry.
Shannon, thanks so much for coming out, and a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Can people volunteer to help with these rehabs?
Yes, sir, certainly. Anyone as interested in volunteering, individuals or agencies can contact our office, and we'll put them in contact with our contractor.
And I'm going to ask as many citizens as I can to volunteer. We finished one home.
Yes, sir.
Out on Ty Street, and what a blessing.
Yes, sir.
What a blessing. Won't go into it, but wonderful to be able to rehab these homes. These, these property owners have been there a very long time, and it's great to see this moving in our district. How would, how would you classify the amounts that we're going to extend the max to? Because is it twenty-five thousand right now?
It is twenty-five thousand right now. However, with the substantial rehabs, I am, I am not comfortable giving an amount. I will accept a recommendation for the board if you all have anything in mind. We do have one home in particular, which I believe we have pictures of. The need of that home would honestly be a demolition and a rebuild. When I say substantial, I'm speaking a great need. There is a home of approximately eight or nine members in this household. They are low income. It is my understanding that they've been in the property fifty to sixty years.
Okay, so we, we just shouldn't put a cap on this?
That is my recommendation. We will not be exceeding the five hundred thousand awarded for this activity, and we still have the goal of assisting twenty households.
Okay, as long as we still get the twenty and then.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. With that, go ahead.
Shannon, I have a question in reference. So, this is fiscal year 2016 budget, correct, award?
This is funding from the CDVG program for 2016. Our funding year is different from the county's.
Right, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So, did you have a limit time from this award that you must use this funds?
Yes, ma'am. The program year ends June thirtieth of this year. We have a timeliness test as of May. Otherwise, funds can be rolled over for ongoing activities. I would like to add, the household that Commissioner Prince was mentioning, Ms. Mother Woods, the owner of that property, she was aware of this meeting this evening and decided to come and show her support.
Thank you. See.
Out there, we appreciate you.
Any other questions or comments? We'll now call for a motion for approval.
Then I'll move to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Prince and a second from Commissioner Clemmons. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. Samuel.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Wood, as well, for being out there. We'll now ask Mr. Dante Gibbs to come forth. We've got several planning and zoning items this evening, and we'll begin with the public hearing for an ordinance by Henry County, Georgia to amend the Chapter Four of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. Hello, Mr. Dante, how are you?
Good evening, Chair, I'm well, and Commissioners, good evening. If I could ask Ms. Stephanie Brunn to hit the overhead, please. Thank you. To give a little background regarding this proposed ordinance, our current future land use map has over twelve activity centers that are deficient in their projected thresholds. These activity centers are supposed to provide for the concentration of mixtures of higher intensity and density land uses with standards to ensure pedestrian-friendly, compact centers that are economically viable, serviced by adequate public facilities, and integrated with surrounding uses in the area. These activity centers are supposed to promote a village concept which allows citizens to build a sense of identity for small towns and rural places, as well as allow for collaborative effort by citizens, developer staff, and the Board of Commissioners to establish appropriate uses within these activity centers. These activity centers have been a part of the future land use map since April twentieth two thousand nine and are currently deficient. This deficiency is in part due to ineffective and unrealistic regulations specific to development. As an example, under the, under the current activity center's requirements, if a developer proposes a development that is equal to or greater than five acres, the current regulations require that that developer master plan the entire activity center. With that said, a viable replacement for our activity centers is needed. Due to the deficiencies in meeting the projected thresholds and overall regulatory ineffectiveness of Chapter Nine, which is currently entitled Activity Center Overlay District in our ULDC, this is an ordinance, this highway corridor overlay proposal, to repeal Chapter Nine in its entirety and amend the Henry County Unified Land Development Code to add Section four dot zero-five dot zero-zero to Chapter Four entitled Henry County Highway Corridor Overlay District. The Georgia Department of Community Affairs defines an overlay district as being used to establish alternative land development requirements within a specific area of a community that requires specific, special attention, such as an environmentally sensitive area or rapidly developed, developing corridor. The overlay is usually superimposed over conventional zoning districts and consists of physical areas with map boundaries and written text spelling out requirements that are either added to or in place of, or those of the, in place of those of the underlying regulations. The Georgia Department of Community Affairs also goes on to say that overlays are frequently used as standalone regulations to manage development in particularly areas of a community. The Henry County Highway Corridor Overlay District will exclude existing districts located, existing overlay districts located in unincorporated Henry County, as well as any community improvement districts that have been initiated or completed. The Henry County Highway Corridor Overlay District boundaries will include all unincorporated parcels of land abutting Highway one thirty-eight East and West, Highway one fifty-five North and South, Highway twenty East and West, excluding the Bruton Smith Overlay District, Highway eighty-one East and West, Highway forty-two North and South, Jonesboro Road, Jodico Road, Eagles Landing Parkway, Hudson Bridge Road, East Lake Parkway, East Lake Road between Highway one fifty-five and Highway twenty, Fairview Road excluding the Fairview Road Overlay District, East Atlanta Road, North Henry Boulevard, Highway nineteen forty-one, and the Henry County Airport and abutting properties. This overlay is supplemental to the underlying zoning district classifications established in the Henry County Unified Land Development Code governing all properties and approvals within this, and approvals within this overlay district. The provisions of this ordinance shall be overlaid upon and shall be imposed in addition to the underlying zoning regulations and any, and any other Henry County ordinances. For your viewing, the remaining PowerPoint slides are illustrations of the design guidelines of the overlay district. And I'll go through them semi-slowly so that you can kind of get an idea. Excuse me. And these, excuse me, and these examples are the examples of lighting specifications, examples of street landscaping requirements regarding trees and other plantings, street lighting, pedestrian walking with street lighting and landscaping, some examples of the types of lighting that you can anticipate seeing as part of the design guidelines for our section of Chapter Four that addresses lighting specifications. These are some of the examples of the trees that will be required to be planted to add beautification to these corridors in the falls. A number of these trees will look quite impressive. And this is not an endorsement of anyone, for the record, but these are examples of the standard that will be required in these, in this corridor overlay regarding the commercial and residential developments. And with that said, I introduce to you the Henry County Highway Corridor Overlay District, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Commissioner Holmes?
Dante, first of all, I just want to say, great job. I think, you know, we've needed something like this in place for a very long time. My question to you is, are we working with the cities to do similar overlays, or does this cover the cities as well?
This does not cover the cities, and we are not currently working specifically with the cities. That is not to say that we cannot partner with them with county management's help and the Board of Commissioners's assistance to do, to kind of have a joint effort, but when it comes to overlays, unless they, through motion of their respective boards, choose to be involved and allow this overlay to be applicable to their jurisdiction, it's only applicable to unincorporated Henry County.
Other questions?
I would just like to ask.
Go ahead, Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Clemmons.
And encouraging some type of participation with the cities, because I know as they continue to annex properties that are in the unincorporated areas of Henry County into the cities, then we, they don't have to adopt our overlay guidance or our overlay district that's in place. So, just want to make sure that we're encouraging some type of communication. I know for me, with the Jodico Road project, that project would have been subject to this beautiful overlay, but because it's been annexed into the city of Stockbridge, you know, they don't have to abide by this new beautiful overlay district.
Commissioner Prince?
Dante, long time coming. This, I don't want to gloss this over, this is probably one of the biggest things that this board will do for many, many years. What this does, if you've ever driven down a road on a main thoroughfare and noticed that all the buildings looked cohesive, meaning that they all are brick, they're all stacked stone, all the architectural features are sane, roadways are sane, multi-use paths, this is what we're doing here today. And I'm, I'm going to have to hand this over to staff and tell you what a great job because I recognize the activity centers as being deficient. We had a, an area in my district where a developer was trying to put in a commercial building, but he had to do an overlay and master plan the entire roadway, I mean, the entire area, and it just wasn't feasible. So, I actually came to Dante and said, this isn't working, and Dante, you were three months, four months ahead of me already, I think, and Sherri, you were already there too. So, very rarely do we, do we have that when both the Commissioners and, and staff are on the same page. But, to the citizens, what this means, when you come to Henry County and a developer comes and wants to put in a commercial building of some, some sort on our commercial corridors, you are going to have to bring your A-game. You are going to have to develop a building that is architecturally, you know, cohesive with the other buildings, bricks stacked stone. All the thoroughfares will be like, like shown that you had back there where you have the pass, the multi-use pass. If you actually see, we have the lighting structures that you use, pedestrian lighting, street light, parking lights, that have to be used in this. Twenty years from now, after this board's long gone, you'll still be able to drive through Henry County and say, wow, this looks nice, this is a nice area. And I think we've actually gotten ahead of the north side on this, if I'm not mistaken, Dante, are we, has Gwinnett done this yet, or are they?
To my knowledge, Gwinnett has not done this per se. They do have an updated Unified Development Code that they adopted a couple of years ago, but the majority of the surrounding jurisdictions that we've researched, even Peak Street City doesn't have an overlay. There was rumor that they had one for their airport, but they don't. So, this is, this is rare, so this is, this is innovative.
Yeah, this is big. I just don't know if the citizens, you know, I don't want to, like I say, just gloss it over. This is a major thing for Henry County, and, you know, like I say, twenty years from now, we'll all look back and say, what a nice area, what a nice county, how cohesive, how nice. So, I'm really proud of staff, thank you, Sherri, thank you, Dante, Stacy, everybody that put this together, and this will also help things move. How many activity centers do we have? How many activity centers do we have active right now?
Active? Right now, with their deficiencies, they're not technically active, just kind of hit or miss, whomever comes in decides to develop that actually is encompassed inside of an activity center, but we have approximately twelve throughout the entire county dispersed.
Twelve, but none of them are active?
Kind of randomly, no.
So this has been part of the issue with any kind of development, as far as commercial development throughout the county. So again, thank you staff, big deal, really appreciate you guys putting this together. This is a huge deal for Henry County, so thank you so much.
My pleasure.
All right. Any other comments from Wilson or Barn before we come back to you, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Dante, you spoke to building materials, lighting, sidewalks, and those type of things. One thing you missed out on was signage. And one thing I want to see along 138 was some type of uniform signage up and down 138. Can you speak to that?
Sure, there will be, there will be uniform requirements for architecture design standards to, to match those that the signage is attached to. So the, the underlying base signage requirement is our, is our current sign ordinance, but as far as architectural material, it will have to meet and, and match what the overlay requires for the actual development.
So the, the overlay impacts new businesses?
Yes.
The older businesses are grandfathered in, correct?
Yes, any, any businesses that are currently present are grandfathered. If a development has already vested by application to the, to the county, they are vested with the current code, but anything that comes hereafter, once this is adopted, then they will have to abide by this overlay if they are developing within the overlay.
Sounds good.
All right, very good. Any other comments or questions? Well, there's a big smile on my face as well. So we are now moving into, this is a public hearing regarding ULDC AM 1603. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to the request will have a total of ten minutes to present their opposition. Those in favor will likewise have ten minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now.
Okay. Having developed commercial property here in Henry County, it always fell on the owner of the property, the developer, to make the project as aesthetic as possible. These overlays are going to wind up putting undue restrictions on potential commercial property down here, and they're definitely going to be putting more cost onto the value, not the value, but cost of building these, these structures to begin with. Mr. Prince, you, you like the idea of uniformity. Okay, I, I can, I can understand where you're coming from with that. But we don't live in a county where we have uniform houses. We're trying to get away from cracker, cracker box houses. Now, cracker box houses can, can be rather substantial, they can be two thousand, three thousand square feet if they all look the same. Is that really what you're trying to get here? Because I don't think that's what the people want. We have the ideas, and then sometimes we have to come before you to say, hey, this is a little out of the ordinary, but how's it going to look? Is it going to improve the overall value and, and look and feel? I think you're overstepping your, your roles here in trying to put these overlays on people. They drive me crazy, basically, because they allow you to do things from your positions that you really shouldn't be doing. Let the people decide what they, what they want. Let them decide what they want to build, because somebody who lives here in this county, chances are good that they're not going to want to put something in that doesn't look good. It reflects on them. Now, I, I worked in the, in the nineties and early 2000. I had to work through the, through the county commission, and I did. And we came up with a good, viable action that looks good to this day. But we weren't told that by the likes of a county commission. It's your job to work with the people, not against them. And I feel like these overlays are working against the people. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you. There are seven minutes remaining for anyone in opposition. I'm sorry.
I think that the board has got too much control right now. If somebody wants to have a gray house, I'll be able to have it. You know, y'all, I don't have, I don't think y'all have, this is not a Gestapo or anything like that. This is not a communist country. Give the people the right to build what they want. I've got properties all over the county, and I don't want you telling me what I can do with my properties. Now, I think you're an engineer, so, Mr. Prince, that'd be right up your alley. Thank you.
I'm a little bit different. I believe in having a, a beautiful entryway into the county and maintaining integrity throughout the county, but since you've been in office, if you get off of 216 and come east, there's a tire place right there in the corner. Now, it took me two and a half years to get approval for the aesthetics around our school. Two and a half years. I had to redesign it four times, and I bet you I got more trees and shrubs on that five acres than, than any track in Henry County, because it's, it's just loaded with it. And I come across 216 interchange, and there's a business right there on the corner that's just been remodeled, and there ain't a shred of grass. It's parking from one end to the other. Now, if that's integrity of a entrance to our county, Lord help what y'all call integrity. But let's just don't take one track. Let's go out 81, and a man's got a beautiful brick home, and there's a, there's a feed mill on the right just past there. And y'all allowed a man to build a convenience store so close between a little street there and his house, it's literally next door. I mean, it's like ten feet. Y'all, y'all let him put up a privacy, a wooden privacy fence that we've already talked about in this commission meeting, five years from now will be falling down and looking like crap, and y'all allowed that to be done. It appears to me with our school that it was a matter of who you were, not what integrity you, you intended to do throughout the county. I want to know if you're going to stop intervention between commissioners and permitting and application, because if you don't, that thing ain't worth toilet paper, because it won't work like that. If you allow these people to put in a retail business with no grass, no aesthetics, no, no buffers, and yet I'm on Walker Road, way, way away from the I-75, and it took me two and a half years and four drawings from certified county-approved architects to get my approval to build a school. That's the only school in Georgia that does coding on the space station with NASA. So it ain't a matter of integrity, it must be a matter of your interpretation. And if you ain't going to do no better job than that, that thing right there ain't worth fifteen cent.
Thank you. Well, now, I ask anyone wishing to speak in favor, would you please come forward? All right, the public hearing is now concluded. Are there any other comments and questions before we move towards a motion? Call for a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
We got a motion by Commissioner Prince?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Holmes. Any discussions further? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now moving to public hearing AP 1701, the Jodico, oh, that one's been removed, so we will move on to the public hearing RZ 1638, Wade Holmes Incorporated of McDonough, Georgia regarding a rezoning from RA to R2 in District Three.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Stephanie, if I may ask if you could-
Excuse me. May I have permission to speak for a moment, please? We're not, we're not clear on why we've been removed from the docket, Jodico, Reginald Methodist Church. I'm sorry, was, I'm sorry, was-
Was pummeled, it was tabled for this evening.
Was pummeled?
Yes.
Why? Why? Tell all the details on the agenda.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, please, you were responding.
That item was tabled by the Commissioners, and whenever there's an item on the agenda, it is at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt the agenda. So tonight, when they amended the agenda, one of the amendments was to table the Jodico Road, United Methodist Church appeal.
Well, as, as we stated, it was adopted in our amended agenda, so we will move forward. And again, that item will be presented at the next meeting in April.
When will the next meeting be, I don't understand.
Okay.
We'll re-advertize for it, according to the zoning procedures law. The item before you, RZ 1638, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residence for a development of a single-family residential subdivision. The proposed subdivision will consist of fourteen lots on 14.91 plus or minus acres with a net density of 1.2 dwelling units per acre, which is supported by a future land use map designation of the property as low-density residential, having one to two units per acre. Staff recommended to the zoning advisory board in January approval with twelve conditions, and the zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners approval of the applicant's request with the twelve staff-recommended conditions, and I'll place those on the overhead for your viewing. Be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay, any questions?
Not just time.
Well, this is a public hearing on RZ 1638, and persons wishing to be heard in opposition to this request will have a total of ten minutes to present their opposition. Those in favor will likewise have ten minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward now. Last call for anyone in opposition. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward now. Last call for anyone wishing to speak in favor. The public hearing is now concluded. Are there any other questions or comments before we move to a motion?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't know if I was supposed to come up or not. I'm a little nervous, so just, sorry.
Okay, you may proceed, sir.
What I'd like to do is just introduce myself, just let you know who I am. My name's Wade Crawford. I am a lifelong Henry County resident. I grew up in this county. I graduated when there was only two high schools in the county. My dad actually served as a county commissioner back in the early nineties. So what, what I want to present is, and ask your approval, is, is, is basically to change the R zoning, RA to R2. My plans for the subdivision is to develop the subdivision myself, build the homes myself. I have no plans in developing it and selling the lots. I have no plans selling the property or anything like that, so that's kind of where I'm, I'm standing. I'm going to build a really nice subdivision. I'm currently building a subdivision right down the road, Owens Crossing. I took over that subdivision. I built thirty homes in there. I've actually finished those homes out. It's, it's, it's turned out to be a great, great subdivision. I, I do have some pictures if, if the board would like to see what I'm planning on, on building in the subdivision.
Yeah.
All the homes will be, you know, of course, two-code, all four-sided brick, they all have, you know, covered back porches, you know, all the, all the yards will be sotted, irrigated. You know, the homes will probably range anywhere from, you know, the 250s to the 290s is probably the range it's going to be, you know, pretty much depending on the development costs that I have. You know, once, you know, I was lucky enough to take over Owens Crossing there on Snapping Shoals, and, you know, I feel like I did a really good job finishing that subdivision out. And, you know, I, I live in the county, I've been building homes for over twenty-five years, and, you know, I take pride in, in what I do.
All right, are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Barn?
Wade, have you looked at the recommended conditions?
Yes, sir, I have.
There's, there's number two that I would ask that we modify that condition to read, where it reads now, "All homes shall have side entry two-guard garages where feasible." And I'd like to take the where feasible out, so each house has to have the side entry garage. Would you be amenable to that?
I would be fine with that, yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I've met with him earlier, and I think this is a good product, and I totally support moving forward with this.
Okay. Well, I do want to reopen again for just public comments in, in opposition to what you just heard, since we've heard from the applicant, is there anyone that wants to speak in opposition, and if there is so, there's about ten minutes available. Call for anyone in opposition. Is there anyone in favor that would like to speak in the for a total of ten minutes? Okay, now, this does conclude our public hearing. So now, we are called for a motion for approval.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to rezone this piece of property from RA to R2 for the property located at 1623 Snapping Shoals Road in Land Lot 85 of the 8th District.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second with those conditions?
One second.
We got a second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed in that state? Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. We're now moving to public hearing COMP AM 1609 regarding Tim Jones Properties of Atlanta requesting a comprehensive plan amendment for property located on Mount Carmel Road near Mira Road. Mr. Dante Gibbs?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use map designation of the subject property from low-density residential to medium-density residential in order to support their request to rezone the subject, I'm sorry, in order to support their request to develop the property as an approximate 212-lot, single-family residential subdivision with a corresponding net density of 3.4 units per acre. In evaluating existing nearby neighborhoods in the area, the average net density is approximately 1.93 units per acre. The proposed development would have a net density of 3.4 units per acre, and the current trend regarding the average net, net density of this area is supported by the current future land use map designation of low-density residential, having one to two units per acre. The applicant requests, the applicant's request to amend the future land use map to medium-density residential, having two to 3.6 units per acre, would be out of character for this area. Therefore, staff recommended denial of the applicant's request to amend the future land use map to the, to the zoning advisory board in January 19, 2017, and the zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners denial of the applicant's request to amend the future land use map. At this time, be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, well, the applicant will please come forward. Any questions from the board?
I don't know if I heard.
Oh, yeah, I did ask for the applicant to please come forward, I'm sorry.
I apologize, Madam Chair. Julie Sellers here on behalf of the applicant. I would like to just spend a brief moment asking the Commissioners to consider the request to change the future land use map, and if I could. I wanted to make a few brief points as it relates to the future land use map, and if you look at the character areas for the majority of the proximity in the area to the south of Jonesboro Road, you'll see it's the light yellow color on the map, and what the light yellow color is, is the low-density residential. And what we would request for you to consider is changing that to a medium-density residential in this area. This is, the subject property is where I have the blue lines right here, and if you'll note, we are directly adjacent to high-density mixed-use residential on the future development map. And if you look at the existing densities in the developed residential communities adjacent and around us, in the staff's report, those densities do exceed two units per acre. So we would suggest that, as you all probably are aware, we are seeking a rezoning after this, but we would also ask for you to change the future development map in this area, which would be in conformity with a transition from a high-density to a lower-density. What you have right now is a high-density to a low-density, and we're missing that middle piece. And we would suggest, from a land use standpoint, having that transition is appropriate both for the county, for the residents, and from sound land use planning principles. And we would request that you approve the application to change the future map as it relates to this parcel. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Dante, I have a question for you.
Would this, um, if we do this medium-density, that, would that just be for this property? And does that mean that the next agenda item can or cannot go forward?
No, it would be for this actual tract of land or the respective parcels. For the next item, it would just mean that the future land use map would act, in actuality, have at that time, will, will, will support what they're asking for. But as it is right now, the future land use map is not supportive of the rezoning request, the actual density level, and as it is currently, the future land use map does not support the, the net density that they're requesting.
But you don't need the first one to do the second one?
No, technically, you can rezone the property without amending the future land use map. Uh, it's not necessary. It's just, it's just standard practice and, and good practice.
Commissioner Prince?
I have a question for you. Low-density, what zonings fit in low-density?
Uh, the zoning districts that you normally find in our low-density are RA, R1, and R2. That's what you normally find. In some cases, you will find R3 that meet the, the units-per-acre requirement, that is, the one to two units-per-acre, the net density.
One to two?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, other questions? Okay, well, this is a public hearing on COMP AM sixteen oh nine. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to this request will have a total of ten minutes to present their opposition, and those in favor will likewise have ten minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? If so, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If, if it's all right, Commissioner Clemmons and Commissioner Woods, because we have two issues and we're only going to get ten minutes, I'm going to go ahead and make our presentation, because we're here on behalf of both of those zonings, and then, when you get ready to do the rezoning, other members of District Two would like to speak as well. So if it's all right, I'll go ahead and do the presentation, even though it really covers the rezoning.
Uh, ma'am, what we'll do is actually allow the ten minutes total for today, and then we'd, if we can potentially extend it another ten, but we'll have to extend it again for the favor, and so we just encourage you to maximize the ten minutes, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Dear Honorable Commissioners, Mr. Gibbs and Mrs. Yoder, and I hope I pronounced your name correctly. I don't see the planner. On behalf of the citizens and homeowners of Henry County, Georgia, District Two, we humbly and respectfully request the above case be rezoned from RA to R1. R3 is not consistent with the contiguous rezonings, the future land use map, or the residential agricultural character of the area. District Two citizens' response in opposition of modifying the future land use map and/or rezoning from RA to R3 for parcel tax ID number, and you've all been given a briefing book that has the information that I'm about to outline. Whether the requested rezoning and/or necessary amendment of the future land use map will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent nearby property, no, absolutely no. One, the subject property is currently zoned RA and was purchased by Mr. Tim Jones July nineteenth, two thousand and one, with nearly five acres previously excluded, excluded for the homestead of Mr. Ernest Bloodworth from Charles and A. Dear Dickerson. Mr. Bloodworth's home immediately south of the subject property is zoned RA. Two, Mount Carmel Properties, previously owned by Representative John Lunsford, to the immediate west of the subject property is zoned R1 Conservation Subdivision and gave an easement to the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority for this development on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and two. Three, the McDonough Covenant Fellowship Church to the immediate east of the subject property is zoned RA and is a vital part of our community. Also, to the immediate east of the subject par, property, not to the immediate north, as shown in the applicant's application, but to the immediate east, is the Legend subdivision, which is also in your book, previously owned by DeKalb Commissioner Bobby Lanier with REIL Development, and is zoned R2 with a net density of one-point-five-four houses per acre. Four significant vital wetlands, Crittle Creek, with eighteen migratory endangered species of birds, and a hundred-year floodplain are directly north of the subject property. B, whether the requested rezoning and/or necessary amendment of the future land use map will adversely affect the exist, existing use or usability of adjacent nearby property, yes. The subject property is currently zoned RA, not R1, and is completely surrounded by similarly zoned properties. The zone request to R3 is not compatible with the existing uses and usability of the adjacent nearby property. C, whether the property to be affected by the requested rezoning and/or necessary amendment of the future land use map has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned and conditioned, yes. The property has always been classified as residential agricultural and was purchased in nineteen ninety-nine as residential agriculture and sold to Mr. Jones in two thousand and one as residential agriculture. As President Thomas Jefferson said, agriculture is our wisest pursuit, because it will in the end contribute most to real wealth, good morals, and happiness. D, whether the requested rezoning and/or necessary amendment of the future land use map will result in a use which will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools, yes. The Georgia Department of Transportation has Mill classified as an urban local road and Mount Carmel as an urban local road. Mount Carmel Elementary is looking at adding trailers and is ill-equipped for the additional students. Dutchtown Elementary is, uh, Dutchtown Elementary's demographics show that ninety percent of the kindergarten classes qualify for the breakfast and school lunch program, as the majority of students are economically depressed. And Dutchtown Schools, as many others here in Henry County sadly, are also challenged with the infiltration of gangs. Cows don't drive cars, call nine-one, commit crimes, or go to school. Agricultural uses make a significant contribution that does not negatively impact its community. Whether the requested rezoning and/or necessary amendment of the future land use map is in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use plan, no. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the Horizon Twenty Thirty Future Land Use Plan identifies the property, sorry, my mouth is dry, property as residential agricultural, low-density, not to exceed two-point-oh units per acre with any future developments. The land use plan that the District Two citizens worked diligently on envisioned R1 rural-by-design conservation districts and town and country as seen in Randall Arnt's books. From the legends to Hampton, with livable and sustainable communities being developed that would set a precedent for other communities to emulate, not the same old sprawl and chain store restaurant mentality. We envisioned healthier communities with conservation districts and walk-and-bike path trails similar to Peachtree City connecting our subdivisions and homes, schools, and commercial with paths that could easily be acquired through the utility systems with shared easements and maintenance. We hope to see preservation of agriculture, sensitive wetlands, water, mom-and-pop businesses that truly make a community unique from sprawl. Whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property, I'm sorry, my mouth is dry, which give supporting grounds for either the approval or disapproval of the requested rezoning and/or necessary amendment of the future land use map, no. No other conditions exist for granting the approval of this rezoning request, but like with parenting, it is imperative that when we set the rules, our land use plan, that we be consistent by enforcing it, as we do with all of our children. Mr. Jones, and rightfully so as an investor, will want to extract every resource he possibly can from the property and get the highest maximum use he possibly can by convincing folks that it is only suitable for his purposes, which is R3. But wisdom, justice, and moderation prove that in the end, when we make a plan and stick to it, we arrive at our desired destination. The citizens of District Two have worked tirelessly and endlessly to ensure that the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the Future Land Use Plan only called for low-density, consistent with the rural charact, rural agricultural character of the area. In conclusion, there is no record that we can find that ever rezoned the property from RA to R1. We ask that you, Honorable Commissioners of Henry County, grant the rezoning to R1. Comprehensive and future land use required to be filed with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs serves the purpose to keep us all honest and accountable in ending the game we call zoning for dollars. When we make an exceptional rezoning, as being requested by Mr. Jones, or an exclusionary rezoning, then we set the legal precedent for not adhering to our policies and future land use goals relating to our growth moving forward. Therefore, we set our county up for future lawsuits like the one previously filed by Mr. Jones in Tim Jones versus Henry County. An approval by the Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve this rezoning request to R3 medium-density and approve the required amendment to the future land use map, Horizon Twenty Thirty, from low-density to medium-density, would be unconstitutional and discriminate in arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable manner between the citizens and owners of similarly situated property and violation of Article One, Section One, Paragraph Two of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three and the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution. Any action subjecting the property to conditions and/or reclassification that do not contribute to protect public health, safety, welfare through its rezoning or reclassification and inconsistent with the future land use map and the Comprehensive Land Use Map also contributes to an arbitrary, capricious, and discriminatory act classification that would likewise violate each of the provisions of the state and federal constitutions as set forth herein above. Finally, looking forward to our future, we need to revisit zoning on the basis, and I'm proud of y'all for what you're doing with the overlay districts. We need to, uh, look at, at revisiting zoning on the basis of increasing evidence that certain types of community design promote public health as opposed to the dominant pattern of sprawl development, which does not. Zoning and the land use planning linked to it that prohibits or disavers health-promoting community designs contradicts the inherent public policy goal on which it is based. If there is a paradigm shift underway from traditional sprawl to health-promoting community designs, then health professionals and others should understand why zoning must be reassessed, and the citizens of District Two stand ready to assist in that future initiative. Oh, I wish my mouth wasn't so dry, sorry. The mission of the citizens of Henry County, District Two, is to bring about social and policy changes that promote opportunities and a greater quality of life for all of our citizens and their families, regardless of color, race, ethnicity, sex, religion, or political beliefs, ensuring that all District Two citizens have the opportunity to live, learn, work, play, and worship in Henry County while always striving to be a shining community model for other communities to emulate. God bless each of you, and God bless Henry County. This is respectfully submitted by me and in your books at the meeting on Thursday night that we had with, and I wish my mouth was not so dry, ah, that we had with Commissioner Clemmons. There are eighty-something signatures from the folks that came to that meeting, because many of our group could not be here tonight due to work, and some got tied in traffic. There was a bad wreck. And so I will move and let, uh...
Well, thank you. We have forty-nine seconds remaining.
The... I would ask you to look at the tab, because I've put the tabs that I've referenced in here, and when you look at the tabs, I've also put the comments that relate. And one of the comments I'd like to make is that Mr. Jones, as you will see in Tab D, Mr. Jones' Talon Homes, has a rating of an F by the Better Business Bureau.
Thank you. We have eighteen seconds remaining for anyone else who wants to speak in opposition. Thank you. We will now allow anyone who wants to speak in favor. There's a total of ten minutes for anyone that wants to speak in favor of this zoning hearing.
Just so we're square here, I'm in favor of the zoning board's take on this, and that is that it should be denied, this zoning application. Very important that this be denied, because the people in District Two, they have had about enough of this. There's a constant onslaught trying to...
Okay, well, we've had, we've concluded our time. Thank you, sir. Okay, we now are into the public hearing of those that want to speak in favor of this public hearing, of the zoning. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, County Commissioners. My name is Julie Sellers. I am here on behalf of the applicant. I want to make a few notes for the record. I do want to note that I have submitted our constitutional notices as required by Georgia law into the record by submitting a letter to the clerk. Want to briefly touch on a few things that the opposition raised. I heard the message loud and clear that the desire is for this land use to be agricultural, and I would suggest to you that that is not what the law in Georgia supports. It's not what the law requires, and actually, that's the opposite. The law in Georgia supports and requires you all to exercise your police power when you are going to be restricting the free use of property for a property owner. Mr. Jones is not a fly-by-night investor. He has family that has been in the county for years. He has owned this property for sixteen years, as well as other property in the area. The desire to maintain a use of agriculture and a zoning of agriculture is absolutely contrary to what your future land use map says, as well as sound land planning principles. We are looking at property that is in close proximity to the interstate. We are looking at property that is just south of Jonesboro Road, and this is a million square feet of retail space. It is a vibrant part of the county, and it needs to be celebrated and reflected as such. And when you look at the density that is in this area, the density is that of medium-density residential in some areas. I'm not suggesting the entire area, but there's a lot of vacant land that at some point will in fact be developed, and what Mr. Jones is suggesting is a medium-density, which is consistent. Talking about exclusionary zoning, and I apologize, I didn't catch everything that was said. There was a lot there, and I know you all are processing it as well. But when we talk about exclusionary zoning, I want to point out what that is, because it's actually the opposite of what the opposition is raising. Exclusionary zoning is when a local government is requiring property owners to have large tracts of land, very large homes, that really exclude the majority of folks from being able to live there. What Mr. Jones is proposing is not exclusionary. It is actually proposing a medium-density of which there is a void in the community. You need medium-density. You need that middle ground for people to have homes that they can afford, that are nice, that are safe, and it's a transition between the high-density multifamily and the large tracts of land that are found in the R1, R2 areas. The Constitution does require you to consider when you are going to be limiting the use of someone's property, you've got restrictions on how far you can go with this. I did confirm with the county's planner that the property is currently zoned R1. We are not zoned agricultural, and your zoning map, which I've got a copy of, this is your best evidence of what the existing zoning is. It's not agricultural. What we are asking here is not a huge leap. It is a very practical change in the future land use map for one area that would actually make our densities consistent with some of the surrounding properties, and we sincerely ask for your serious consideration. I know you have a difficult job to do, especially when faced with opposition, but I do understand that your duty is to uphold the law and the exercise of your duty, and I would suggest that approving this change in the Comprehensive Development Plan for the future development of this property would be consistent with the exercise of that duty. I have Tim Jones here with me if he wants to talk about the land use. We'll talk again, obviously, on the rezoning, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, we have a remaining five minutes and forty-one seconds in favor.
Thank you. I'm Tim Jones. We got a new board for the most part since I was last here, which, probably a bad thing. That means I hadn't been doing much, but, you know, over the course of my career, I've built, you know, just in Henry County, probably the excess of two thousand homes. I've done a lot of commercial development in the county. Uh, I think it's pretty nice, you know, some of the stuff I've done, and we, uh, if somebody... was talking about my F, I don't know. I remember we built under Tim Jones Communities, and we had an A- when we shut it down in '07. And, you know, we take care of our problems, and I don't think I've ever been in the court down here over a lawsuit over a home, to be honest with you. What I'm trying to do is come in here and build some nice homes. You don't have to have a big lot. We're not going to build small starter homes. We can't make money building starter homes, I'll be honest with you. You know, one of the few that's left in the county that's, you know, still building is pretty much controlled by the big, multi-billion-dollar public national companies are doing, I'm guessing ninety percent of the home building here. And it's like Sellers said, I mean, we back up to over a million square feet of retail. The future land use plan calls for up to sixteen units an acre bordering this piece of property. The property on either side of me is R3. It already is. I know they want me to do agriculture, which I don't think's quite fair, you know? And what we want is just a little smaller lot. It's only a sixty, sixty-five lot difference than R3, which the other subdivisions have, but we do want to put a nicer home in there. And I think when you've got the interstate, you've got commercial, you need density, and the county needs more retailers. Retailers follow density. They don't follow, you know, you've got to have a lot of homes in a smaller area to really make all that work. And that's basically what I'm trying to do. When you ride down the road, if you look at what the size lots we have, you'll never notice the difference from what the other people are joining me have. And I know they bring up a lawsuit. I mean, we're in business. We don't go down here and try to sue anybody. But, you know, I did have a lawsuit in Henry County. This was twenty years ago. And, of course, we won it, and the county appealed it to the State Supreme Court, and the State Supreme Court unanimously upheld it. But what I want to tell you is, I mean, the attorney that represented the county became a Superior Court judge. And I get another zoning, and guess who my judge is? Judge Crumblin. The attorney said, "We've got to get him off the case." I said, "No, he's fair. I think what I'm doing is right, you know, it's within my rights." We went before George Crumblin, he ruled for me, you know? So I'm not out here, you know what I'm saying? What we doing was within the law, and I wouldn't even mention this if it hadn't been brought up, but that's not the business I'm in. I don't want to go to court over anything, you know? We just, we're home builders. We're trying to go out here and build people homes, to raise their families and to live in. You know, I've got children in this county. I've got grandchildren in this county. My parents were buried in this county, and I left living down here because I couldn't find, when my kids got gone, a good place to get in a smaller home and a smaller lot. I would like to come back down here because I've got grandkids here. Where am I going to go and get a nice house on a smaller lot? I don't want a big lot. I want, I'm talking about, you know, maybe a fifty-foot wide postage size. I'm retired, but I'm your best guy. We travel. We don't have kids in school. We spend money. We eat out, and there's a lot of people just like me that would like to be in this county, but we don't have a place to go. And anyway, I just wish y'all would consider, you know, I've had this land fifteen years, and just, you know, consider what I'm trying to do here. If y'all have any questions.
Thank you. We have a minute and twenty-eight seconds remaining for anyone else that wants to speak in favor. Last call for anyone that wants to speak in favor. Okay, that has now concluded our public hearing. Is there, are there any questions or comments from the board before we call for a motion?
Yeah, I just want to say to those that spoke in opposition of this, we did have several town hall meetings in reference to this. I do understand exclusionary zoning. I understand the need for high density, and there is a place for that. As a citizen and the representative for District 2, I cannot ignore the concerns of the citizens of District 2, and I won't. And I just want to let you know that we understand where you are as a developer, and it's not our intent to get involved in telling homeowners and people that own property what they can and cannot do, but we do have a responsibility to uphold the character of the communities that we live in, and so I just want to let you know, we understand where you are with this.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Now call for a motion.
I'm going to move to deny this request.
We have a motion to deny this request. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a second by Commissioner Barm. We have a second by Commissioner Barm. Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Any opposed in our space? We now will move to the next item, which is regarding RZ 1633 regarding Tim Jones Properties of Atlanta for rezoning from R1 to R5, and we now ask Mr. Dante Gibbs for his presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone ninety-five point three-four plus or minus acres from R1 single-family residence to R5 single-family residence with the intent, as stated in the previous case, to develop a single-family residential subdivision consisting of approximately two hundred and twelve lots, having a net density of three-point-four units per acre and a minimum lot size of ten thousand eight hundred and ninety square feet. The subject property is abutted by RA, Residential Agricultural, and R3. And for your viewing, I'm going to put a copy of our current zoning map on the overhead. The applicant's requested rezoning is inconsistent with our future land use map designation of the subject property as low-density residential and would not meet the one-to-two unit-per-acre requirement per our comp plan. On January nineteenth, twenty-seventeen, planning and zoning staff took a recommendation of denial of R5 to the zoning advisory board but approval of R3 with seven conditions. The zoning advisory board recommends to the Board of Commissioners denial of R5 but approval of R3 with the seven staff recommended conditions, and I'll place those on the overhead I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Gibbs?
Mr. Gibbs, you guys are denying R5, and I know that's because of the area and what's around it, but did you guys make an informed recommendation on this when you decided to approve it at R3? I mean, what did you use to make this determination?
On the overhead, there's a comparison of surrounding subdivisions that show a consistency of R3 zoning. What we look at is the character of an area. We look at current trends. We look at what's there. And when we do that, we use that along with our policy guide, with our future land use map, with our Unified Land Development Code to make an objective recommendation. And the applicant requested R5, and with the current character of the area, is not supportive of a density of that, of R5, but it is of R3 considering the subdivision to the east and the subdivision to the west. And on the overhead, and I'll kind of walk through it, you have the Legends of Rowenshire that are currently zoned R3. You have the Gates of Rowenshire, which are here, that are currently zoned R3. The Legends of Rowenshire are located here. And you also have the Village of Rowenshire, which is here, also zoned R3. And then you have Tail Fair to the west, which is zoned R3. And each one of these have a net density that is actually within the future land use map, one-to-two units. There's only one subdivision among that list that exceeds that. So staff took a number of hours and took a lot of time to come up with an objective recommendation with respect to how the area is currently developing and what's existing. So with that said, that's how the R3 zoning recommendation came to be.
All right. Commissioner Franks?
Quick question, Dante, just for clarification. This is old R3 or new R3?
It's new. If it's current R3, it meets the minimum standards of our current code. So if it was previously R2, that means that the eighteen thousand square foot minimum caused that R2 to become our new R3.
R3. So it's got current R3. Lots is R eighteen thousand square feet?
They can't be, yes, they have to be at least eighteen thousand square feet.
Okay. Other questions?
And the difference in this R3 zoning that you guys are recommending and the R2 zoning, what would be the adverse reactions to having R2 instead of the R3?
Basically, what you're looking at is if this were to be rezoned to R2, you're looking at a minimum lot size of thirty thousand square feet versus R3 having a minimum lot size of eighteen thousand square feet. Also with R3, there's a sewer requirement, whereas with R2, there is not. With respect to the development, depending on how they engineer it to meet the minimum lot size will determine the number of lots they will actually yield. So with increased lot size, which will in essence lower the density and decrease the number of total lots, but if you decrease the lot size, you technically increase the density of the potential subdivision, and you increase the yield.
Other questions? Now we'll ask the applicant to come for questioning as well. We ask the applicant to come forward. Are there any questions to the applicant?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Fellow Commissioners, Julie Sellers here on behalf of the applicant. I want to go ahead and again refer to the constitutional notice that we did put in the record that relates to both applications for the future land use map change as well as the rezoning application. Wanted to point out a few things. I think, you know, we obviously heard the Commissioner's decision on the future land use map, and I can certainly read between the lines there, but I do want to address when you look at the actual development changes between R5 and R3, which is what the staff has recommended, I want to commend the staff because I think they did put a lot of work into this and some thoughtful consideration, that the R5, when you look at, if what we're talking about is we want nice homes, we want nice homes that are going to be at an appropriate price point, these homes are going to be between two-fifty and three-hundred thousand dollars. When you look at the difference between R5 and R3, the size, the minimum size of the home in R5 and R3 is the same. So going from what we have asked for as far as R5, you're really looking at the lot size, which is what Tim was referencing. We've seen a big shift in the way people are living and the house choices that people are making in their lives. Not everyone wants to be saddled with a large yard, having the maintenance and upkeep, having the additional water expense, especially when we've been having droughts and, you know, issues with maintaining the yards. So I want to be very crystal clear that what we are seeking here is a quality development. Admittedly, the lots are smaller, the homes are not. So I think that that's an important distinction, and I wanted to make sure that we highlighted that for you. Again, we believe that the plan that has been submitted with the R5 is not substantially different than the zoning and what's in the ground around us. It is a different classification, but it is not substantial. We're talking about the difference on ninety-plus acres of perhaps about sixty homes. That's not two to three times what you could get based on the zoning that our neighbors next door have. We would ask that you consider our request and approve the modific, excuse me, approve the rezoning from the R1 to the R5. Being that I am not naive, and this is not my first zoning hearing, I can also understand that there may be some of you that are looking at me saying, "Well, I'm not sure that I'm going to go in that direction." I might be inclined to support what our county staff has recommended. And if you are sitting in that chair having those thoughts, I would ask you to look at the surrounding neighborhoods and look at the conditions that are imposed on them and look at the staff conditions that we have here, and perhaps make a few modifications. The staff was very thorough and thoughtful and laid out for you what the exterior treatments are for our neighbors, and those have requirements for seventy-five percent of the front of the home to have different types of materials. In the Legends neighborhood, and in the Gates, it's sixty percent, in the Village, it's sixty percent, on the front of the home. We are not talking about neighborhoods that have restrictions that require four sides of a particular treatment. If you look at what the staff has recommended here, it is four sides of a specific type of mixture of materials, which is certainly a higher development cost. Now, you could look at this and say, if we've got more homes, if we've got our R5 zoning, we could probably do the exterior treatments, and that's what Tim's intention was. If I've got more homes, I can do higher finishes, I can do higher-quality product because I've got a few more of them. Again, not significantly, but enough to make that difference, to do the upgrades that are suggested. When you look at having the R3 zoning, and when you look at having to be competitive, and you look at comparing our value in our property, and is it a constitutional value, looking at the surrounding neighborhoods, if they don't have these restrictions, I would suggest to you, it's not appropriate to saddle us with a much higher restriction as far as what our homes have to look like. That also coincides with the staff condition number three, which is the side-entry garages. The neighborhoods around us, if we're trying to be similarly situated and stick with an R3 classification, then having the side entrance garage is not substantially similar to what we have around us, and we would ask that you consider modifying those two requests if you are inclined to go with an R3 approval. Again, our request before you today is for the R5. I think the R5 would achieve the higher-quality finishes that the staff has recommended and would make that a viable project for us to do so. If you are not so inclined, we would ask for your serious consideration to strike conditions one and strike conditions three. Our goal here is to end up with a quality development that not only Mr. Jones can be proud of and part of bringing to the community, but that the county can also look at and take pride and take comfort in knowing that you all made a decision to add homes into the community at a mid-level to allow for folks that don't want the extreme maintenance of a larger yard.
Thank you. I just want to briefly say, you know, I appreciate all the people's concerns. I've done a lot of these zonings. I've had a lot more people show up, a lot madder. On two occasions, I had a representative of a homeowner's group came up opposing my zoning. We were able to get the zoning worked out. I developed the subdivisions. Those two people became commissioners here in this county, and after seeing what I did, they always voted for my zonings because they liked the quality work that we did. So I think their concerns, I know their concern, and I can appreciate that, but I think when we go in there and build and develop what we're talking about doing, they'll be extremely happy with it. Thank you.
Any questions from the board to the applicant? Okay. All right. Well, this is a public hearing on RZ 1633. Persons wishing to be heard in opposition to this request will have a total of ten minutes to present their opposition. Those in favor will likewise have ten minutes. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward now.
The lady that was here a few minutes ago that spoke in opposition, ditto. She did a great job. Same thing here.
Can you see that? All right. If you'll refer to your table of contents, and also, when you look at the rezoning map that Mr. Gibbs showed you, there are not three different colors of yellow. There's only one yellow, and it is low density. The other different densities, you know, are, I'm not sure why they put three different yellows, but the old and the new future land use map that the citizens worked on diligently called for low density, not to exceed two-point-oh. Anything exceeding R2 would require an amendment to the comprehensive land use plan. R3 is medium density, not low density, and is not consistent with the covenant and is not consistent with the covenant made with the citizens of District Two to maintain the semi-rule character of the area. For the citizens of District Two, it's about quality, not quantity. Any rezoning should require that all four sides be the same, such as brick, stucco, stone. No central mailboxes, side entry garages, sidewalks and curbed roadways. Tab C, Mount Carmel Road Proposal. This is Tim Jones' standard ploy to ask for much more than what is permitted and hope he will get us to settle for a little more than what is actually permitted. Tab D, Tim Jones' Properties. The vinings by Tim Jones with an entrance off of Jonesboro Road is the R3 that they're referring to. It is predominantly REO, not owner occupied. So is High Grove with a shoehorned lot that defies both logic. Sorry, guys. That defi- I forget how you turn these things, I'm sorry. If you look, this is the fence right here. It is on an incline. And when I was campaigning, I actually talked to that lady who said that her downstairs, the first level stays soaked. Every time it rains, it comes in. You can see the fence is torn down and of course, it's vinyl. Mr. Jones' reputation is for high density and vinyl. Unlike several builders within our community that live in their developments, Mr. Jones lives in Buckhead. And it is important about his suit, which is Tab E. It's important that you read the details of the lawsuit. Mr. Jones, in my opinion, is a recalcitrant and he twisted the facts because Henry County was vulnerable and still in its infancy of developing quality land use standards. Wade Crumley, as he mentioned, our county attorney at the time, stated that the zoning was in no way exclusionary. In addition, Mr. Jones claimed that the area now known as Henry Town Center was not even suitable for commercial development. Tab F, Tim Jones, Mount Carmel Property Tax Parcel. As you can see, in nineteen ninety-nine, he paid eight hundred thousand for it and then, or he bought, it was, I'm sorry, it was bought for eight hundred thousand and then it was sold to him for one point three million. The tax assessor now has it valued at five hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We all lost our wealth during the Great Recession, but we cannot expect to make up our financial losses on the backs of Henry County taxpayers. It is also noteworthy that only a small southern portion of this property even has access to Mount Carmel Road. Tab G, Tim Jones' Talon Homes, which was founded in twenty-ten, is, which builds medium to high-density homes in the one sixty to one seventy-five price range, has an F rating by the Better Business Bureau based on customer complaints. And that's Tab G. Fish and Wildlife Services, which is Tab H. The property is literally sandwiched in the middle of very vital wetlands and is a beautiful natural resource within itself. Tab I, the Unified Land Development Codes. Future zonings after the date of adoption were not grandfathered. So R2, men R2 then, it still means R2 now. Mount Carmel Partners Incorporated, Southern General Development Corp., which is the adjacent property, has, was previously rezoned to R1 and will follow suit on whatever zoning you give Mr. Jones. The Legends, and it's in there, I wish you'd go to Tab K. The Legends, Platte Book Forty-two, page fifty-six, is R2 with a net density of one point five-three units per acre. And that's the one they're referring to on the eastern portion. The Villages and the Gates of Roanchar. And my friend Ken is here from The Legends and the homeowner was with us Thursday night. That is also zoned R2 and there's nothing in there that the net density was one point seven-four. So again, we've not exceeded 2.0 units in that area at all. REL Properties and REL Development, which is at your Tab L, was denied for a planned development of R2. And that will also be following suit. And Tab M is the SPOS and capital improvements and the short-term work program that you all put forth with your capital improvements element updates. Many of our growth problems can be mitigated by following our comprehensive land use map by granting rezonings that are consistent with our goals. Tab N is Mr. Prince. I call it ending the game of zoning for dollars. District Two urges all of our commissioners to unite and end the game that we call zoning for dollars. Tab O, the Joint Henry County Cities Transportation Plan. Mount Carmel Road. Let's see. Let's see. Mount Carmel and Mill Road are both classified by the State of Georgia Department of Transportation as urban local roads. Neither one of these roads can support medium-density developments. Both roads are collectors at best. District Two SPOS Projects, I'll skip over that. The, and then Tab Q is the Atlanta Regional Commission, which we are part of by choice and we need to always consider the regional impact of our local decisions. And I'm just going to close. My son was home. My son serves in the Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division of the United States Army and he was just recently home and is fixing to deploy. And one of the things, we were discussing this and he, I'm going to cry because he just left three days ago, but one of the things that he said was, you know, "Mom, if home is worth dying for, then please make sure that it's worth living for and fighting for." And so again, I ask you, please not to zone this R3.
My name's Larry Phillips and I'm not going to talk about the size of lots or the zoning. I think you've heard all you need to hear about that. Those of you who don't know me, I also am a builder and I developed a subdivision on Mount Carmel Road. And I actually live in a subdivision that I developed. What I want to address tonight is the exterior of the home. And from what we've, I've seen up here, I'm pretty happy with it. Most of my homes that I've built are brick homes. I would love to see three-side brick with concrete siding above the roof line and maybe all concrete siding on the rear. That's what the majority of these homes are. We hardly, no builder uses vinyl siding anymore. It's all concrete siding, which is a great product. So basically what I'm asking for with most of the homes that are in the area, either four-side and a lot of them three-side, is I'm asking for the board to kind of go with that. And Mr. Prince, go with your comments about the commercial buildings that you like to see, the commercial buildings being like they are. We ask no less for these homes.
Two minutes and nine seconds remaining for anyone who wants to speak in opposition.
Just want to add one thing. You're being gamed, okay? When someone comes up here and asks for R5, they're looking for R3. So let's not hold any punches here. If you do this R3, you're again going against the will of the people in the area and the original compact they had with you.
I design smart growth cities. And, you know, if I can get an R3 or an R5, I can make a lot of money per acre. That's what you look for. That's what developers look for. But the poor taxpayer, he just gets it, he just gets it crammed down his throat. We don't allow for nothing for schools. We don't allow nothing for infrastructure. We don't allow anything for recreation. We don't allow anything for roads. You know, we just, we just opened the door. In two thousand, two thousand and five, you could have built a thousand outhouses on that tract of land. Everybody just do what you want to do. I was hoping we'd learn something, but, you know. But I go in places in Henry County and I still see these stacked in, side by side, you know. We cannot, I lived on Walker Road and we have a school there. And then the county come in and built two more schools. And it's like a killer zone in the morning and the afternoons on that two little, two-lane road with potholes on each side. We cannot keep growing like that. We cannot, we almost caught up now building schools and here we are fixing it, here we are going again. It took me thirty-eight minutes to get here tonight. I was late, I couldn't speak.
We're out of time, thank you.
Thirty-eight minutes because of what you've done on one fifty-five.
Thank you, we've concluded our time.
Well, you ought to take time to go look. That would help you.
We now will open the floor now for those that want to speak in favor. There will be ten minutes allowed, a total of ten minutes allowed for those that want to speak in favor.
Just briefly, they were talking about my Better Business Bureau. We got five complaints. We just pulled it up, less than one percent. That's great, we can't do better than that, you know? If you read the biggest home builder in the county, D.R. Horton just set aside almost five hundred million dollars for warranty working complaints, so it's not that bad. But I want to tell you a few of the things that I have done, even when things were bad in this county. Inside the gates of Crystal Lake, we weren't an original builder in there. We went in there and got with some local banks that had some lots and went in there and built some homes. And we actually brought values up fifty to a hundred thousand dollars a house in there. There was a time during this period in recession, they were going to, there was, nobody was paying the dues. It was mainly the banks. Banks wouldn't pay the dues, they just didn't care. They were going to shut down the gate in the record at Crystal Lake. We paid, I paid, fifty thousand dollars in advance dues and money I really didn't have at the time to keep the gates open, which it did. And it made Crystal Lake one of the better communities in this area. During this same time, a guy named Glenn Bullard, he actually had bought the golf course at Crystal Lake. He bought Eagle Brook. He got mad at the whole world and left, went to Thailand or somewhere. The bank was foreclosed on Crystal Lake and he had Eagle Brook flip free and clear. Some of the homeowners at Eagle Brook that I know, citizens, I never built a house down there, came to me and asked me, "Can you help us? We cannot have this golf course closed." I went and negotiated with Glenn Bullard and the bank. They released him from the personal guarantee at Crystal Lake. He gave me Eagle Brook, who I in turn gave to the Swininger Brothers, great golf course people that have Crystal Lake. They kept Eagle Brook open. I got nothing out of it. And if you look in the tax record, it shows a sale. It was mostly the taxes, real estate taxes, taxes and a few things like that that had to be paid. So I hadn't really been bad to this community and the homeowners. I've done some things when I was strapped. I mean, I was underwater financially, but I always came down here and tried to help the people in this county. So some of this stuff they're saying, I just, you know, I take a little bit of offense. Just, I mean, they probably don't know the true stories of some of the things I've done, but I've always been involved in charities down here, the stuff for the children, the kids. And we've always, when we've made money, we were one of the biggest to help, to donate. So I think I've been, you know, pretty good to this community and the homeowners on here. And we've always taken care of problems. If we had problems with houses, sure, we messed stuff up, but it's not that much. But we always go in there and fix it. And I think, you know, that's big. And so I just wanted to, you know, I felt like I was getting beat up a little bit and just come in and say these things that probably nobody knows. I just, I haven't been that bad a citizen and for the homeowners in this county. Thank you.
And I think just to wrap up and piggyback on what Tim just expressed, I think it highlights what I picked up very clearly that the, there's a lot going on with the opposition. And I think that it is important to note why we are here on this specific application. This is not an application that should be personally attacking Tim Jones. This is not an application that really should be looked at in any larger scope than the property at issue. We are talking about a little over ninety acres and we are talking about changing the zoning classification from R1 to the requested R5. The properties around us are zoned R3 and we are also in very close proximity to significant commercial and retail development. You were charged tonight with making a zoning decision and your code and the law sets forth the regulations for your consideration under that, when you are considering and making that zoning decision. And what I would suggest to you as the information that you have before you, is there any dispute that there are some residents who do not want to see this? There are residents who would prefer for this to remain undeveloped. And while we can understand if you're living near an undeveloped land and you get to treat it as though it's a private forest and you get to enjoy it and you get to enjoy someone else's property, are you motivated to oppose development on that property? Oftentimes, yes. And I think we've seen that here tonight. But I think when the county commissioners look at what the role is, it is not to maintain an agriculture and rural community. It's to look at the land use principles, to look at the growth and to balance the public's health, safety and welfare and balance that with Mr. Jones' right to freely use his property. And I heard a lot about some protected animals. I heard about the character of our community. And we are not here suggesting something that is some offensive or illegal use. We are here to ask you to give us permission to build some homes. And there is nothing with building homes that goes against the public's health, the public's safety and the public's welfare. And that's what Georgia law says. When you are exercising your zoning discretion, it's a legislative discretion, that's what you need to focus on. And focusing on that with this application supports a decision to approve the application as requested. I am not going to get into rebutting everything that we've heard because quite frankly, we've heard too much and I did not hear anything other than we don't want growth. We don't want growth is not a basis to deny this application and we appreciate your consideration. I know that it is not an easy task when you are asked to vote on something and balance the legal rights of property owners in the county against some neighbors who would rather continue looking at a forest, an undeveloped land. But that is the decision for you to make tonight. We appreciate your consideration and we appreciate your time, thoughtful attention to this and for pursuing that balancing act and voting in favor of the constitutional rights and the use of property in a manner that is consistent with the land use principles and the surrounding zoning and use of the residential property around us. We're not even going to talk about the commercial and higher density to the north of us. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
There's two minutes and forty seconds remaining for anyone else that wants to speak in favor.
I just want to say one thing that's really not pro or con, but I want y'all, I would like for y'all to really look at. There's been a lot of discussion about neighborhoods that are adjacent to the west or the east, but there's never been any discussion on the, on the south side of all this. And I would just like for all your consideration, pro or con, that y'all look at the whole area, not just the subdivisions. There's a lot of rural area there too that hadn't been discussed at all. Thank you.
Any others that would like to speak? We have a minute and forty-eight seconds remaining as we speak. Last call for anyone that wants to speak in favor. Well, this now concludes our public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I have some comments. I just want to say that in response to, there's a lot going on here and a lot of opposition. This property is in District Two and I'm the commissioner of District Two. I will not spend my term making emotional or political decisions. I have researched this property. I have had several town hall meetings in reference to the properties. I've met with those community members who have called me, talked to me, met with me after meetings, and there are a lot of concerns that we have to consider tonight. There has been a lot of meaningful participation in this process of where we go with this tonight and speaking with staff and doing the research, making sure that we are looking at everything. And in response, in the reference to what the other homes look like around there, that was a different board and probably other commissioners approved those type of homes. And where I sit today, I have to be concerned about if Mr. Jones is not the builder. If he just develops this land and other builders come in, I want to make sure that those other builders that come in will honor these things that we're talking about tonight. So there are things that we have to do as a board to make sure that we protect what is said tonight and that we make sure that it is done. And in reference to our staff recommendation, that is what they are for. They are to give us informed legal policies and decisions that they make. So yes, I will consider what they have said. But I can assure you that it's not based on political motivation or being bullied by homeowners or anyone else, or the builder. being bullied by homeowners or anyone else, or the builder, but we will make informed decisions based on what we think is best for the entire District 2. Dante, I have a couple of questions for you. There are conditions that you have, that the board has put in place and staff have put in place for this project, and I have a couple of questions. Have sidewalks been addressed in this neighborhood?
It's a requirement per our development code.
So it is a requirement, okay.
Standard.
Underground utilities?
Yes, it's addressed in, matter of fact, condition number... No, not a condition, development standard with the zoning.
But it, they would be underground utilities?
It will need to be underground.
Okay. Streetlights?
The same.
Okay. All right. And there's two ponds according to the map, what are we doing about pond screening?
That would be something that the developer would need to probably address and respond as far as what they would be required, but there is, there is shrubbery and greenery requirements in our landscaping, and you ought to see requirements when they go through development plan review.
Okay, so I want to address that tonight. Can, Mr. Jones, will you do approach for the mic, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, could you please address the improvements as far as the pond screening or the protection that you would put in place for the ponds that are there?
Well, there's not any pond ponds, those are detention ponds we would build. Yes, ma'am. And they have to be fenced and landscaped per, you know, the county code.
Okay, so do we have a code for that?
Yes, our UODC addresses that, so that's standard.
Okay. And the CMU, you have a condition for a CMU and I've heard, is that a new, that's a new policy that's...
2012, the United States Postal Service requires all new subdivisions that are developed thereafter to have centralized mailbox or centralized delivery systems. So it's not a local, it's federal.
So I want to make sure that there was an opposition where, I think Ms. Tina came up and said that we shouldn't have that. Things have changed since 2009 and this is a 2012 code and we have definitely looked at what we're supposed to have up to date, so that CMU is required?
Yes.
Okay.
Real quick, Dante, Mr. Jones. I don't see anywhere on here, regardless of zoning, any kind of feature for the CMU. Regardless of what the zoning goes, you're going to have to do some kind of design for off-street checking of the CMU. You can't have 190 something people sitting in the road checking the mail.
Oh, that's correct. Well, you know, the post office, I think, actually dictates that.
No, they don't.
They don't?
They don't.
But I know we're doing, even on some older subdivisions we've got where we've gone in to build, they're making us put it in, I thought it was the post office, maybe the county.
The post office requires you to put the CMU in, what I'm saying is...
But we do us a drive-through, like area, where you drive through and get your mail off the road.
That needs to be a condition, yeah. That needs to be a condition in this to where you actually design, I would look Canterbury.
Yeah, but we're, like I said, we're doing that on some stuff that we've gone back in that was years old, we're putting them in, yes, sir.
Right, right, but we need to condition that, Dante, so a condition for a drive-through CMU off of the main...
There'll be, as soon as the board makes that, then I'll, I'll make sure that it's amended.
All right, any other questions? All right, if there are other questions, we'll now call for a motion.
Well, I will move to approve with amending these conditions, I'm going to look at these conditions that we have. We're talking about, we don't want high density. I have another question before we move to approve. Medium density would give us how many houses per acre? What is that going to give us?
Medium density will allow 2 to 3, 2, 2.6 units per acre.
Okay. So definitely we don't want to go with R5 and we're not going to do medium density. I move to approve with R3 with making some amendments to the conditions. Number one, the all homes shall be craftsman style, consist of all side bricks, we will keep that one, number two, all houses shall be built on site, we will keep that, number three, minimum of 50% of the houses shall have side entry garages. Number four, the disturbed areas, front and side shall be sodded. Number five is good, number six is good, and number six, address the traffic concerns that the citizens of District 2 have, that we would do the TIS and whatever the cost is to address the traffic issues that the developer would pay for that. Number seven, that we must have that pull-through for the CMU, it must be a drive-through CMU. I want to also add that the minimum heated floor area shall be 2,000 square feet homes. And if Mr. Jones can deal with that one, we want to make sure that we do the lot size, I want to definitely deal with the lot size, because 2 to 3 homes would not be sufficient, that is not what we would like to see in that area for District 2, and I would say that it would have to be 22,500 square feet per lot, making it, each home would have to be on at least a minimum of half of an acre. If he can deal with that, then we would, I would move to approve with R3 conditions, with those conditions.
And do you accept those conditions, Mr. Jones?
What was the first one?
That all homes shall be craftsman style, consisting of all sides, brick, stone, stucco or any combination of two or more of the following material on all sides. And you're more than welcome to take this back and bring it back to us with these conditions in place.
Yeah.
I think that the homeowners would, this would kind of address the fact that we don't want high density, we want, we don't want to set a precedence for medium density in this area. We want to make sure that the quality of these homes are conclusive to what we have and the character, and I think this will help us out and make sure that even if you're gone after you develop this land, that whatever builders come into this area would make sure that we get what we want in this area.
I would, the only thing I'd like, I would like to leave, if you can, 18,000 foot lots. We need the density, and to be quite honest, with a zoning R3 with 18,000, I can't make money at this today, I won't go sell the property. I'm hoping, you know, with the market picking up in values, maybe in another year, we would come back and revisit it, but that was strength, we just, I would lose.
18,000 square feet, put more than one house per half an acre?
With the current future land use map, the net density has to be within 1 to 2 units per acre. So with R3, they will still need to meet that net density, and so it may work out to where the average lot size may actually be greater than 18,000 square feet, but the minimum requirement per our code is 18,000 square foot lots.
I want to make sure that we don't get a house more than, I want every house a half an acre or bigger.
Well, that's...
Every lot?
Every lot.
That's a, that's just a, if, the density, I'd get hurt. See, that gives me a little bit of unfair advantage for what's developed down there, and when these other subdivisions were developed, we didn't have the codes with all the ponds. If you, if I were to develop this under R3 10 years ago, we'd have got a pretty good bit more lots.
How many lots would that give you, Mr. Jones?
I believe we got it here, was it 150, 160?
With what we just, with what I'm proposing now?
On the 95 acre.
For, for a half an acre lot?
Uh-huh.
A half acre, let's see, it's 43, what's an acre, 43, 560?
Half acre would be about 20,000.
100 plus or minus.
Well, it's 43, yeah, just a shade under that, I think, yes, sir.
That would give you how many homes?
You're looking at approximately, you're looking at approximately about 180 to 185 lots.
Yeah, that's, that's as much as we've gone, we can go with.
But I couldn't, I'm just to be honest, I couldn't, I couldn't make that work, I couldn't accept that, you know? It just, I just can't do it. And see what you do, and if you do that, it gives me, I got, you're putting more restrictions and bigger lots than what everybody else has beside me. You see what I'm saying? I'm just saying, well, just be fair with me.
So, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Jones? Yes, sir. One of the things that we've tried to do here in Henry County recently, because we've recognized some things in the past that just, we're a little, you can't put a side entry garage on an R3 lot, it just doesn't work.
On which lot?
On an R3 lot. It doesn't work, you don't have the side setbacks to put a side entry garage, there's no way to do it.
Well, it's extremely hard, you're out of separate corner lots.
Right. So, we're really getting away from the pull-forward straight-in garages and doing the side entry, and there's no way to do the side entry with...
22.5.
22.5, you can squeeze them in there, and you'll, you do have some leadway on 50%, but that's kind of where we're at in Henry County now. I know it's a new game, new day, and I understand where you're at, and I know this, the market in some areas does lean toward the high, high density, but not here.
And just to be fair with you, there've been other developers that have come who were approved by the board before us, and they wanted to come back and have to amend things to try to get those side entry garages or front load homes, and it just doesn't work for that area for us. 50% side entry and we gave you that lot, that lot size so that you could get that in there.
Could, could I, just for clarification, because I want to make sure that I'm clear, if I'm understanding, the concern is you want to make sure that the approval and the conditions that are imposed today allow you to achieve the 50% of the side entry garages?
We're just talking about the 22,500, also trying to make sure that we don't get more than a house per half an acre.
So the question is, Mr. Jones, do you need more time or do you think that this is something you can, can accept?
Well, I mean, y'all can zone it, I just, I just can honestly think, we've run these numbers on this things 10 million different ways, and you see the problem my guy does is these, these, all these big builders are going in and building on 10, $20,000 lots, so it's going to cost me 30 to develop it, plus your dirt, and it just, today, and I'm not saying in a year, two years it works, but today it doesn't work. You know, for my development costs that I'd have to do to, you know, and then I'm...
The market is coming back, so if you develop it, maybe the builders that come in behind you can make some money with it. You've got to look for the future.
Well, here it is, I, the question that we have on the table is, can you accept the conditions that has been, that is being proposed before the motion, because if not, then it fails.
It just doesn't work for me, I wished I could come in here and tell you it did, I wish more than anything I could come in here and, I wish somebody would come by and put, like one gentleman said, one house, you know, pay you enough money, that'd be fine too, but that's not really what's, what's going to happen, you know?
Okay, well, we're hearing that...
I mean, y'all can zone it that way, but I'm just saying, I can't go in there, y'all don't want to come in here and tell you I can go do it when I, when I know I can, you know?
Well, we move to approve with the R3 zoning, with the conditions.
Commissioner, can I, can I ask you, I'm, I'm a little confused about what your lot size goal is, are you, are you saying a minimum lot size of 22,500 square feet?
Correct.
Is that...
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're clear on what that is.
Okay.
Along with all the other commission, conditions as, as you read.
Okay, so will you restate your motion again, Commissioner Clemens, so that we're a bit clearer?
I move to approve these, this to be a R3 zoning with the conditions that we've set forth.
Dante, could you read the conditions? For the record, please.
Yes. Condition number one, all homes shall be craftsman style, consisting of all sides, brick, stone, stucco or any combination of two or more of the following materials on all sides, brick, stone, stucco or cement fiber board, vinyl products are only permitted in the softets, eaves and phasia. Condition number two, all houses shall be built on-site, no modular or manufactured homes. Condition number three, a minimum of 50% of homes shall have two-car garage standard with side entry where feasible. Condition number four, disturbed areas of the front and side yards shall be fully sodded. Condition number five, curb cuts to the site are to be located such that the minimum space and requirements are met per the UODC and that the minimum intersection site distance is met per the road's posted speed limit. A deceleration lane slash ASL table is to be designed and constructed to Henry County DOT standards for subdivision street curb cuts onto, onto Mount Cromwell Road. Condition number six, site as proposed requires a traffic impact study to be done per UODC requirements, owner developers is to follow UODC Section 80102 concerning TIS or the traffic impact study requirements as well as mitigating, mitigation measures that may be required by what the traffic impact study shows. Condition number seven, the developer owner shall place a centralized mailbox unit outside of the public right of way for the use of those lots, which will not be served by the United States Postal Service directly. This must be shown on the final, final plan for appro, for approval and must also include a drive-through. Condition number eight, the minimum heated floor area of each home shall be 2,000 square feet. And condition number nine, the minimum lot size shall be one-half acre.
Dante, condition three, strike where feasible?
Can you restate that, one that we're striking again?
Sure. Condition three as amended, minimum of 50% of homes shall have two-car garage standard and will be side entry.
Okay, we've got a motion for R3 with the conditions that have been stated by Commissioner Clemens, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Prince. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? And I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you for y'all's time, sorry it went so long.
Okay, well, at this time, we'll move on now into item 13 from our county attorney regarding the resolution authorizing sale of remnant parcel of real estate to a John and Lawn Mower. If we may need to take a quick break, so if that may be okay, all right, thanks.
Do you want to proceed with, we're missing one, Commissioner, you want to proceed or you want to wait on?
Well, I think we had two that needed to go, so we'll, yeah, we'll just take a quick break.
Good to see you.
Stephanie?